...council meeting to order, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Belkey?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Clistic?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Marques?
Here.
MacGyver? Shower?
Here.
Six present and one absent. This evening Mayor Weaver is unable to join us and we need to have a motion for mayor pro tem. Alderman Shower?
A motion for Joe Marques.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Belzak? Okay. So the motion is to have Joseph Marques as our mayor pro tem for this evening. Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. And the meeting is yours.
All right, that takes us to questions, comments, and announcements. We put this in our agenda several years ago. This gives residents who don't want to wait till the end of the meeting to make a comment, and these are not necessarily agenda-related comments. So is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on anything other than the agenda? Yes, sir. Just come forward and just state your name. Yes.
Jim Okarski, 1902 Gigi Lane.
What side of Darien?
You might want to raise that microphone, Jim. How can we help you? They're all like that, so...
I was gonna say, I could put that on my notes. Couple of issues. One is that I just noticed, eating at the Blueberry Hill Cafe, a tax number, which happened to be 10% of the total bill. And being a regular of Darien and enjoying your weekly emails that I get, I never once noticed that we were contemplating or had implemented a 10% tax increase, which was roughly, what, a 25% or 30% increase? Number one question is, why was that necessary? Weren't there other ways to increase revenue rather than what I personally feel is kind of a Mickey Mouse nickel-and-dime tax on the people? I personally am a good shopper of Darien. I go to Darien gas stations, I go to Darien food stores, and Darien restaurants. And all of a sudden, I found myself shopping when I noticed other suburban areas like Bolingbrook, where I first noticed it. I would assume other ones have the 10% increase, but I don't eat there anymore. I don't shop there anymore. I want to bring my revenue to Darien. And I don't like the idea of saying, okay, you gotta pay this so-called quote-unquote penalty just to eat here. So the question is, is it just a revenue issue that you have? And how much revenue did the city expect to get from that extra bump in revenue? Is there a number that you have in mind?
Five hundred and ninety-five thousand is what we're gonna make off of it.
Okay, question then.
And one follow-up, just so I understood. Did you say 10%? Because the tax that was approved in '16 was 1.25%.
I understand that. The total tax now is 10%.
I understand.
And the first time I noticed that happened to be like, well, was this last weekend, eating at the Blueberry Hill Restaurant over on Kingery. But I first noticed the tax being implemented in other suburban areas roughly two years ago, which was kind of, not a shock, but you'd say, it's gotta be done. Now, the question I have then, how do you replace that revenue if you're looking for $500,000 in revenue? I noticed with Joe's area, which he represents, there's a big gaping hole of unincorporated homes sitting in that area. And there's gotta be a way to get those homes into the city of Darien so that they can contribute to the services that Darien is providing for all of the citizens. Do they get police protection at all, even in an emergency? If they do, one of the ways to entice these homes to join the city is to somehow put some kind of a fee on top of any services that the city of Darien provides within that area. Number two is that, I don't know what the geography is, but it's gotta be close to 60 acres. And the question then is, what can we do as a city to get the homes, since they're all surrounded, to say, we'd like to be incorporated into Darien? I don't know what the total number is, and I probably misread my tax bill before I came here, but it is not a big number. Say $500 to $700. Now, is there any plan that the city is undertaking to go to sell these homes and becoming citizens within the city limits of Darien?
First, you're talking about the area around Eisenhower Junior High, behind there, correct?
Right, everything that's, our Ward III surrounds.
Over the years, probably years before, some of the aldermen sitting here around the council, the city of Darien, we actually went to the people in the unincorporated areas. We did it with the Hinswood subdivision, we did it with that area over there. And we actually talked to residents about becoming part of the city of Darien. And we tried to point out to them the advantages of being in the city of Darien. But because they're over a certain amount of acreage, we can't, I believe we can't force annex at all. I think it's 60...
It's 60 acres.
60 acres. And I think they're over that, as well as Hinswood is over 60 acres as well. Now, in terms of police services, I'm not as sure about that area. I know Hinswood, which is unincorporated, is serviced by DuPage County. And I would believe that this area is also serviced by DuPage County as well. Now, I know residents in the Hinswood subdivision who would love to be part of the city of Darien because of the police services. They would like that, just because the police are, you know, we're there. I mean, and we are there. And there have been some times when Darien police officers have helped out in that area until DuPage County police officers have shown up. And I assume, Joe, same thing happens in your area over there. But Jim, we have worked to try to show people the benefits of being part of the city of Darien. You know, not by charging them extra fees, but by showing them the advantages, the street sweeping, the snow plowing, the street maintenance, and so on and so forth. That's gotta be a decision by those residents in that area. Now, Hinswood has a history, and part of that history is the reason why they don't want to come into the city. That area over there, Joe, I don't know what the reason would be. I know residents in that area, like Alice Brennan and...
I was gonna say, she'd catch...
Alice would love to be part of the city of Darien, but she's not contiguous in any way, so that can't happen. So, I mean, we've tried, and we've tried to do it in a very positive way, but I don't think, it's up to them.
Yeah, even at the time, even if it had met the requirements, and I don't remember the specifics, the council at that time, as a policy, did not want to force people to become Darien residents if they chose not to. So even if you meet that, even, at that time, even if they met that, the threshold for the acreage, the council was not interested in forcing them in.
Forty years ago, we were forced in. And I was one of the people who would, I'd be pounding the table, saying, we don't want to be in. But after 40 years, and you see the benefits, there was no way I would not want to be a citizen of Darien. My point is, one of the things you could do is, I don't know when the last plan of attack was laid out to get these homes to come into the city, is why not offer them a tax incentive? Assuming they have a $500 to $700 hit to join the city, why not come up with some kind of a plan that says, hey, you sign up to be a city of Darien, a non-revocable plan which says you are a citizen of Darien, no Darien-related tax, either for the police department or for the city, for one year. After that, you pay. And it's an irrevocable decision they have to make. Give them incentive to come in, a monetary incentive, because that was the reason all of my neighbors said, we don't want to be in, we don't want to pay the extra money. It's not a heck of a lot compared to the other taxes we're paying for Park District, for the schools, et cetera. So why not try that plan? And if this has not been done in a while, this may be the time to do it. And this little Mickey Mouse tax rate increase, to bump the sales tax at restaurants up to 10%, is a thing that got me thinking about it. There's gotta be a way to get that $500,000 bucks a lot easier than aggravating people with that small tax.
Well, in terms of a monetary incentive, I believe the Hinswood subdivision pays a premium on their water. They get Darien water, correct?
All unincorporated.
All unincorporated.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. They're paying something extra because they're not in the city.
And we have told them that if they came into the city of Darien, then it would be, you know, they'd pay the same rates as Darien residents. But the other thing to consider, and I've thought about this too, and I think everybody on this council needs to think about it. If you brought Hinswood in at 60 acres, or 60 homes, or how many homes are there, or you brought the area behind Eisenhower in at 60 acres, and how many homes, we're also looking at increase in city services, possibly more police on the police force. You have two more areas that you're patrolling. We currently have seven snow zones in the city of Darien that we plow during the wintertime. Now, we might have eight snow zones. I mean, so it's not that we're gonna get that revenue back, even it out. We're gonna have increased costs in terms of our municipal services and our, you know, our safety services through our police department. So...
Sidewalks and...
Sidewalks.
On streets and capital projects, we'd also like to assume as well.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, DuPage County has been pretty good in the Hinswood area in terms of fixing their streets and fixing their curb. I don't know about the area over there by Joe, but there would be an increased cost for the city. So we have to weigh that as well. That doesn't mean we wouldn't talk to them if they came and said, would you consider? We would probably have to sit down, Mr. Vanna in the mirror would have to sit down and really take a look with the council on what the cost would be with regard to the additional services. But you make some good points, and I think, it's not that we're against pursuing that. It's just that we've looked at that, and they've said no. Really, even with the water incentive, they've said no.
Okay. I appreciate all of it you do. On behalf of the city, thank you for the ear, and thanks, Joe, for your assistance in other issues that we've had.
Jim, could I ask you a favor?
Sure.
We start our budget discussions February 21st, right here in the council chambers. And if you'd like to be part of that, you can sit in the audience, you can listen to how we prioritize items that are important, and how we're gonna spend the money and plan out for next year. I'd love to have you in the audience and listen to that.
Sure, can I share?
Find out where that $500,000 goes to.
Can I add something too? Is, you know, we're very sensitive to increasing the property taxes and our rates for that. So one of the ideas with the sales tax on the food was that, you know, other people coming into Darien that are not residents would help pay for that so that it wasn't always just hitting the residents. So that was one of our logics behind that, too.
Well, just tell the restaurant to ask for an ID card, say, hey, you get, it's like a senior discount, except it's a Darien resident discount.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it again.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay. We have no minutes to approve tonight. Receiving the communications. Do any aldermen have any communications?
I'll just put in it for the record, Mr. Okarski from 1900 block at Gigi Lane talked to you, and that's, I invited him here to this meeting here tonight, so.
And we thank him for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Any other alderman, any other communications? Okay, then we have the mayor's report.
Just one second, comment too, I want to mention as well, is that there's also lost revenue. There used to be revenue on landline phones. No one has landline phones anymore. There's also utility fees as well. We're using a lot less energy. So also, our income has gone down as well, is another point I want to make as well.
Anybody else? All right, mayor's report. Rotary Club of Darien Vehicle Sticker does design recognition. Chris Garb's here tonight from the Rotary, and I think we have a young lady that we're gonna recognize tonight, Chris? And she's coming up already.
Hi, Chris Garb, Darien Rotary. We don't buy it, come on up. So, yeah, so I want to thank the city council for letting the nonprofits in town get an opportunity on this vehicle sticker thing. It really is a big help for our fundraising. So this year, we won the contest, and we went to the school district and we had a contest. And Danielle Carson was the design winner, and so we gave her a little plaque and a little recognition for making it work for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. And city stickers are available here at City Hall at the Police Department, and I think we have them in West Suburban Bank and several other areas. And what is, it's a donation?
Republic Bank.
Republic.
Republic Bank as well, I'm sorry.
Get that plug in, Chris, nice.
The second under the mayor's report is consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Michael K. Desmond to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a motion. Moved by Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Mike, you want to come forward here? Take your oath over here. And with us tonight, we also have chairman of planning and zoning, Lou Mallers. Lou, you want to join us up here?
I'm not trust appropriately.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Michael Desmond.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of...
The duties of...
Planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I need you to sign this, please.
Thank you.
And then you can shake everyone's hand afterwards. And then I have your commission card for you. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Well, seeing you again, Lou, I'll talk to you soon.
Mike, you'll have to work to keep... Mike, you were our Lady of Peace, right? I think they went with mine.
He's a Mount Carmel guy.
Mount Carmel, okay. Nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
And keep Lou in line, okay?
All right, I'll try.
Thank you very much. City clerks report?
I have a couple of announcements. The Darien city offices will be closed on Monday, February the 19th, in honor of President's Day. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 20th. And meet and greet with Mayor Weaver will take place on Tuesday, February 20th, at 6:00 PM here in City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
Thank you, Joanne. City minister's report?
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Department head information question. It's chief. Do you have a report for us tonight?
I do not. It'll be two weeks from today.
Any questions for Chief Thomas Siddle?
Actually, chief, I hadn't talked to you yet, but because the next meeting is the citizen of the year, we try to get through that meeting fairly quick. I was maybe, I was gonna ask the chief to postpone that two more weeks after that.
To March.
If that's fine with the council.
First meeting. Mr. Gombach?
Yes, just a quick friendly reminder for our residents, and an invite for our city council this evening. Obviously, with the snow, the temperatures drop. Well, for this particular storm, temperatures are gonna be at the zero mark. So when you wake up in the morning with no sun and no traffic or limited amounts of traffic, you will see roads that will be snow-packed because that salt has the ability only to work to approximately zero, I'll call it 15 degrees as an average. So again, when you see snow-packed roads during these frigid temperatures, regular rock salt does not work as rapidly as it should. Once the sun and the traffic hits it, it does make a difference. And just like the friendly reminder, if anybody wants to join our snowplow team tonight for a ride, please let me know. Be more than happy to set that up. And Alderman MacGyver isn't here this evening, but we really wanted to invite her. So with that said, if anybody's interested in going out with the snowplow crews and see what it's like during that operation, I encourage you.
If they want to pick me up in front of my house, I don't know if I want to drive to municipal...
We could do that as well. I mean, you're obviously in town, so...
Anyways, go through Alderman MacGyver's word, make sure you have a video camera on as you're going through for her, okay?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Treasurer's report, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request council's approval of warrant number 171819, and the amount of $134,849.21 for the listed funds payroll for the period ended January 18th, as well as February 1st, 2018, and the amount of $514,432.18 for a total be approved of $649,281.39.
Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The monthly report, Mike?
The monthly report for the eight months, December, January, March, yeah, eight months into December 31st, 2017, reflect general fund year-to-date revenue of $11,313,406, expenditures of $7,710,897, current balance of $3,628,276. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $5,384,244, expenditures $4,752,435, current balance $1,098,246. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $379,481, expenditures of $236,537, current balance of $528,601. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue deficit of $903, expenditures of $170,720, current balance of $11,528. And capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue $223,094, expenditures of $3463,025, current balance of $6,239,986.
Any questions for the treasurer on the monthly report? If not, Mike, I think you have a police pension report you want to give us?
Yes, I just wanted to update the council. The police pension board had their quarterly review with the investment advisors this past Thursday, which covered the period of the fourth fiscal, fourth calendar quarter of last year, October through December. As you all know, we have two investment managers. We have approximately $26, $27 million in the police pension fund. Each one of them manages approximately half of it. For the fourth quarter performance, one of the investment managers had a return of 3.09%, the other 3.31%, pretty comparable. And then year-to-date, which is the calendar year, even though we're on a fiscal year, but to give you an idea, they both, one was at 12.08% and the other at 13.02%. In our calculations, we use 7% as a return as far as what the fund should be getting. So it's looking pretty good as of right now. January, obviously, was a pretty good month, but what's happened in February took away everything in January, so we're probably back to approximately where the numbers are right now. If you have any questions on any of the details of any of it, the fund is invested approximately 55% in equities, 45% in fixed income. State of Illinois mandates that no more than 65% of the fund can be in equities. Pension board evaluates that quarterly and sometimes makes 5% or so adjustments. And that's how we got, it was about 40% when I first came on board, and currently have moved it to about 55% for the last couple of years.
Any questions for Mike? That takes us to standing committee reports, and I'll start off by saying that the municipal services committee, at its last meeting, approved the minutes of the November 27th, 2017 municipal services meeting, submitted those to the clerk's office. And the next meeting, the municipal services committee will be on February 26th at 6:30 here in the council chambers. Alderman Shower?
Thanks, Joe. Tonight's admin finance meeting was canceled due to a lack of agenda items, and our next admin finance meeting is tentatively set for Monday, March 5th at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room. Our first admin finance committee of the whole for the first budget meeting is set for Wednesday, February 21st, with subsequent meetings being held on Tuesday, February 27th, and Tuesday, March 6th.
Thanks, Ted. And I believe, Tina, that the police committee meeting chief is gonna be held on Tuesday?
I have it here.
You have it, the 20th?
Tuesday, February 20th at 6:00 PM in the police department training room.
Okay. That brings us up to date on our standing committees. That brings us to questions and comments that are agenda-related. Do any of the aldermen have questions that are agenda-related? Please don't have questions that are agenda-related. There is one item, though, that I will bring to your attention. If you go to letter L, L, we talked about this in our work session. The item should read, "Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the Darien zoning ordinance for PZC 2017-6, 450 67th Street." We just changed the wording. It said sign code. We changed it to Darien zoning ordinance. If there's no questions or comments, that takes us to old business. We have no old business. That takes us to our consent agenda. And we have quite a lengthy consent agenda tonight, so please bear with me.
I'll be back in 20 minutes.
That's fine. Item A is a motion to grant a waiver of raffle license bond requirement for signature events on behalf of CTF Illinois. Item B is a motion to approve the Darien Chamber 18th Annual Darien Dash, which will take place on May 6, 2018, beginning at 8:00 AM, and authorize the chief of police to finalize the details of this event with the Chamber of Commerce. Item C also deals with the Darien Dash, and it deals with the streets that will need to be closed. And this is a lengthy list of streets that do need to be closed. That they will begin at 71st Street to Bentley, and they will finish at the Darien Community Park, excuse, corner of Darien Community Park. Item D, motion, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between City Darien and Scorpio Construction. This is for our 2018 removal and replacement, our street program, for various public works projects at unit prices. And this is from May 1st through April 30th, 2019. Item E, consideration of motion to approve a resolution accepting the proposal from Orin Crush for pricing for bituminous products, again, for the same time period, May 1st, 2018 to April 30th, 2019. Item F is a resolution, motion to approve a resolution accepting a unit price proposal for tipping and transfer fees for Wilco Green LLC. And again, this is for waste that's generated in various public works projects. And again, this is May 1st, 2018 to April 30th, 2019. Item G is approving a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for culvert metal pipes, metal bands, metal flare sections for various public works projects, again, for that same time period. Item H is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from DAS Enterprises at a rate of $80.45 per hour for services related to hauling waste for that same time period, May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2019. Item I, it's a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for high-density polyethylene pipes, bands, other equipment for various public works projects, again, for the May 1st to April 30th, 2019. Item J, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for the purchase and pickup of stone from, at the proposed unit prices, from Vulcan Materials Company, formerly known as Elmer Chicago Stone Company, again, for various public works projects, again, for that same time period. Item K, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for the purchase and delivery of stone at the proposed unit prices from Vulcan and the formerly Elmer Chicago Stone for the various public works projects, again, for the period of May 1st through April 30th. Item L is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract at the proposed unit rates, prices for the 2018 topsoil purchase between City of Darien and DuPage Topsoil. And again, these are for the various public works projects for that same time period. Item M, a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for storm sewer structures, iron sewers, grates, concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices, again, for various public works projects, and again, for the May 1st to April 30th, 2019 time period. Item N, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from JC Landscaping and Tree Services Incorporated at the proposed schedule of prices for the placement of topsoil and purchase and placement of fertilizer and sod for landscape restoration, again, for public works projects for that same time period. Item O, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for pressure pipe as required for various public works projects for the May 1st through April 30th, 2019 time period. Item P, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Grade A Grading LLC at proposed schedule of prices for rear yard drainage assistance program, again, for the same time period. Item Q, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from JC Landscaping and Tree Service at the proposed schedule of prices for rear yard drainage assistance for the period of May 1st through April 30th, 2019. Item R, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z Bell Water Service Products Incorporated for Smith &amp; Blair Stainless Steel Water Main Repair Clamp Style 226 with stainless steel bolts for maintenance of the water system for the May 1st to April 30th, 2019 time period. Item S, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z Bell Water Services Incorporated for Smith &amp; Blair Stainless Water Main Repair Clamp Style 238 at the proposed unit prices in various sizes, again, for maintenance of the city's water system for that same in various sizes, again, for maintenance of the city's water system for that same time period. Item T, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z-Bell Water Services Incorporated for general water department utilities fixtures for maintenance of the water system. Item U, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for East Jordan CD250 fire hydrant valves and accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for the period of May 1st through April 30th, 2019. Item V, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Water Products Company for the Claw Medallion Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at proposed unit prices as required for that same time period. Item W, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Water Products Company for the Claw Eddie F-2500 Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices for that same time period. Item X, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Joseph D. Foreman and Company for the Traverse City Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices for the same required time period. Item Y, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for East Jordan Water Master 5BR250 and Water Master 5CD250 Fire Hydrants Repair Parts, again, at the proposed unit prices. Item Z, and I consider this a goal achieved so far, motion to approve a resolution authorizing a contract extension from Mueller Supply Super Centurion Fire Hydrant Repair Parts as required by the proposed unit prices between the city of Darien and Core and Main LP, formerly known as HD Supply Water Works. A-A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z-Bell Water Service Products for US Pipe Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices for that same time period. Item B-B, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Water Products Company for the Claw Eddie Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at proposed unit prices as required for the period May 1st through April 30th, 2019. Item C-C, approval of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract extension for water spacer fire hydrant repair parts at the proposed unit prices between the city of Darien and Z-Bell Service Products for that same time period. Item D-D, motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z-Bell Water Service Products for Mueller brand brass fittings for the maintenance of the water system for that same time period. Item E-E, motion to approve a resolution approving a contract for the 2018 sidewalk apron and curb and gutter removal and replacement program with suburban concrete in an amount not to exceed $620,317.50 and to waive the residential $75 permit fee application for concrete work. Item F-F, consideration of a motion to approve, to authorizing the following roadside ditch maintenance projects. One, Devonshire Nottingham Circle. Two, Dale Road, 67th Street to 68th Street. Three, 71st Street, Richmond Avenue to Clarton Hills. Four, Eleanor Avenue, Plainfield Road to Janet Avenue. Item G-G, a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2018 roadside ditch maintenance regrading program between the city of Darien and Scorpio Construction Corporation for the layout and replacement of storm sewer pipes and structures and grading in an amount not to exceed $678,210. Item H-H, motion to approve a resolution to execute a contract extension for the 2018 landscape fertilization program before the, between the city of Darien and True Green LP for five various fertilizer applications in an amount not to exceed $20,290. Item I-I, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor's approval to enter into a three-year engineering agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for professional services related to a controlled wetland management burn and vegetation management at the Dale Road Basin in an amount not to exceed $21,050. Item J-J, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the county of DuPage for implementation of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program in the Desplains River and the east branch DuPage River watersheds. K-K, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into contract agreement for the 2018 street sweeping services between the city of Darien and Illinois Central Sweeping in an amount not to exceed $32,690. Item L-L, motion to approve an ordinance approving the variation to the Darien zoning ordinance, PZC 2017-6, which is known as 450, 67th Street. Item M-M, motion to approve an ordinance amending title 5A zoning regulations of the Darien City Code regarding solar energy systems. Item N-N, motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the sign code for Home Run Inn at 7521 Lamont Road. And item O-O, motion to approve a resolution executing a successor intergovernmental police service assistance agreement, or known as IPSA. Motion to approve.
Could you read those again?
I need a glass of water. Moved by Alderman Kennedy. Kenny? Second by Alderman Belkey.
You're welcome.
End the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Brings us to no new, brings us to new business, and there being no new business. We move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature to any of the aldermen. Alderman Belzak.
Clistic? Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Quick comment, Chief Thomas. I was receiving an email from a resident that lives on Brookdale Drive, and they just have some concerns with some speeders jumping between Plainfield and 75th Street coming across. They've seen the last couple of months, so I'm not sure if you can take a, take a look at it. It usually happens between 7:00 and 9:00, and then 4:00 and 6:00 during rush hour where they see the speeders in between there, so. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Alderman Belzak?
Yes, I'd like to announce that the Darien Lions Club is having a blood drive a week from tomorrow, February 13th. It'll be at Eisenhower Junior High from 4:00 to 8:00. Hope to see everyone there.
Alderman Belkey?
Yes, I wanted to do a reminder to invite all the residents to celebrate this year's citizen of the year, Jim Kaiser. So we'll be having cake and coffee after our council meeting on Tuesday, February 20th, and that follows the meeting. And then, let's see, RSVPs are needed by February 27th. The event itself will be on March 3rd, and it will be $35 a person, again, at Alpine, and it will be a family-style, seven-course meal this time. And if you need to RSVP, then please call City Hall.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience have any comments? If none, then could I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Belkey. All in favor?
Aye.
She's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good job, Joe.
Thank you.